All right, seeing as it is six thirty, I would like to call to order the meeting, the regular meeting of the Hinkley Big Rock Board of Education for November. Roll call, please.
Barrett.
Here.
Payne.
Present.
White.
Here.
Baddell.
Here.
Engler.
Present.
Siddiq.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Student Representative McMurtry.
Here.
Castanas.
Baddell.
Here.
All right, and as we talked last month, it's in our policy to do the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of our meetings. So if you would rise, we're going to be led by our student leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right, thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Baddell.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Siddiq.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes. All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Engler.
Yes.
Siddiq.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Baddell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to our royal shout out. Matthew, if you'd like to present.
Yeah, so this month's royal shout out goes to Mrs. Anderson and Ms. Dye. So Ms. Dye isn't able to be here today because she's at Dairy Foods in Agronomy CDE tonight in Marengo. So I just want to talk about like the fall events that they led. It was the Sandwich Fair, which Mrs. Anderson and Ms. Dye spent just hours planning out Thursday, which is the day that we get to go to the Sandwich Fair and do the petting zoo. So on Wednesday night, they went out and, I mean, it honestly started days before that, but Wednesday night, they went out and helped clean so that that way in the morning on Thursday they can take care of the animals properly. Early Thursday morning, Mrs. Anderson went to the fair and then Ms. Dye actually had a meeting with the middle schoolers, getting them ready for the middle school charter signing. And then, again, that was another big day for the FFA. So we had, that was a tough day with transportation, to be honest, because we didn't have a bus originally. So they were trying to fill in like who can go on the bus and stuff. So finally got that figured out. Even after the charter signing, they had an interview with Chris Schreinlein with The Big Noon Show on WSVI. And that actually didn't happen until the day of. So a lot of just on-day planning. And then for myself, that Friday of the Sandwich Fair, I was interviewed by Max Armstrong and then Chris Schreinlein as well. And so Mrs. Anderson made sure I was ready for that and just know what kind of questions they would be asking. And then what the FFA is going to be presenting is National Convention. So three weeks ago, we went to Indianapolis. And to be honest, I don't know any teacher that would be willing to drive six students to Indianapolis three hours away. So, and I know that's not easy, so I just want to say thank you. So, yeah.
Well, thank you. We have a certificate for you.
Ms. Dye has a middle school and a high school at the end of the night competing at Marengo High School and a Brown and Dairy Foods. So I'm sure that she can. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, for all of you.
All right, and seeing as we have no citizens' requests to address the board, we will turn it back over to Mrs. Anderson for the FFA update.
At any time, as the kids are presenting, right, so some of their presentation and practice work done, and so each live is a different activity, talking, give a question, add notes, feel free to raise your hand, interrupt them, ask along the lines. It was really informal, just because they had like named this live and practiced it. They might, I might get them done, but feel free to slow them down and ask about their experiences.
Well, this is our National Convention presentation, so this kind of highlights our fall activities and then obviously the National Convention.
Our 2025-2026 officer teams for high school. Matthew Baddell as president. I'm vice president. Harrison Nyer as secretary. Cameron Maholsky as treasurer. Abigail White as reporter. Jacob Day as sentinel. For our middle school, we have Vivian Von Drastic. Andrew Herman, Scott Richard, Jacob Welkney, and Henry Nyer. And our advisors are Tracy Anderson and Zoya.
And then, just to introduce everyone, obviously my name is Max Baddell. And then we also had two other students that weren't unable to make it, just prior commitments. And I think one of them is also sick, so, yeah. And then, just to continue on the presentation, the state convention, that was in the middle of June, so we went down to Springfield for that. We attended a session. We saw Harrison Nyer receive his state degree. I mean, that's not very easy for to get a state degree, so it's a pretty big honor to get. And then during the day, we went to the Abraham Lincoln Museum to go on a tour.
In late July, we attended the FFA Officer Retreat at Shabna State Park where we went kayaking around the lake, did some bonding games, as well as set goals for the 2025-2026 school year, as well as the beginning of the year planning for this year. And also, we also managed to get shirts. They were funded by the County Farm Bureau.
Our fall events, we were at the Sandwich Fair Petting Zoo that Thursday, and there the middle school FFA got chartered. Then we did the Big Rock Flying Match, which is a partner with my family, and it's been going on for a few years now. We did the ag plot harvest and Christmas tree and wreaths.
A lot of these activities are both middle school and high school, high school specific. And so what's really neat is the two higher level to help facilitate that. So for example, the Officer Retreat, they had both middle school and high school kids participate in a lot of activities together, and then we separate off by building to do those individual tasks. Like tonight, we have a specific middle school team compete, and we also have a specific high school team compete. So now we're able to train both buildings, both kids, right, we can go to one group, activate and compete. And so like some of the activities up there, the rich and the middle school specific conference, so every quarter, they do the specific leadership conference per single day at one of the junior college alumni, which is a direct affiliate junior college junior, always for ground zero coming up in winter, which is always a huge highlight. And so what's kind of neat is when you look at those events, it's a wide variety of age group, of what they're emphasizing and what they're doing. And so I think that's pretty neat, that our kids get on college campuses, junior college campuses, they start interacting with schools similar size, different size, regional. And so it's a vast range of activities from here to the world to state.
And to finally introduce the National Convention, so like I said, I already introduced the students. And then, one particular thing to just highlight the event was Thaddeus Burgschnider. He is the national officer for this year. He is actually from Illinois, from the Franklin FFA chapter. So it's just an honor to have an Illinois officer representing as the FFA president.
The first day of convention was driving there, of course. We met with Stillman Valley and Byron at Mendota. We took a tour of the College of Agriculture at Purdue University, which as being a senior myself who has applied to go to an agriculture university, this tour was really cool seeing an agriculture university in person. Then we also toured the engineering side of it, and then we traveled to the hotel. And for dinner, we went to Buffalo Wild Wings with Stillman Valley and Byron.
The second day of our trip, we went to the FFA Mall or Career and College Expo, where there were three hundred or four hundred colleges, so it was a pretty big space. We went to Lucas Oil Stadium for opening session, heard from a keynote speaker, went back to the hotel for homework, and we had pizza together. And for the third day, we were there, we went to student workshops, which the one that we went to was the Leadership is Influence. We went back to the Career and College Expo and explore, which was a lot busier that day. We went to session three, where we heard from the Secretary of Agriculture, and then the Eastern Vice President. And we went to the back nine ball, which is like a tall ball for some team ball.
And day four was the day we kind of just packed up. We're packing up, we left pretty early in the morning. Ironically, Halloween, we came across a little black cat kind of just wandering around the hotel, so that was kind of funny. But we packed up our luggage, went a couple hours till we went to, stopped in Bloomington at the Avanti's, where Sanderson had the bright idea to get us all gondolas, as she calls them. So.
And what are those?
A real big sandwich with a bunch of meat, cheese, and lettuce on it. I can't remember the meats off the top of my head, but.
No, I don't think so.
It's like a, anyone here, it's like a gondola sandwich staple. And so it's like a sweet bread. And I think it's like, we went out originally, got like, get a gondola, so my husband's helping me get a gondola, so we were kind of, so it was kind of fun. I headed back, it gets tired, and you would give them all, you like foot long gondolas in the car, and so.
And then they sleep like toddlers. And then they sleep like toddlers. It's awesome.
Sounds messy.
I called the subway and then I got yelled at, so.
Was it good? Did you guys like them?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
And so now, I would just like to request permission to go next year to the National Convention. So that would be the twenty seventh and thirtieth of October. And then we would be traveling with Stillman and Byron again, just for the safety, because just extra vehicle would be nice, just in case, you know, if something breaks down. And also, like a student is sick, then a teacher would have to stay at the hotel or something like that, so.
Some spring events coming up in this spring will be vet science, which I'm excited for. I attended last year, and since I want to be a vet, it's a really good experience. Plant cells, FFA banquet, and act safety, or another main one's coming up.
And to close this off, I'd like to thank the HBR Board of Education for making, for the continued support on, for our agriculture program. It is greatly appreciated, and without your efforts, this would not be possible. Thank you.
You guys have any questions? Yeah, I have a question for each of you. So what, what would you say was a highlight, you know, your highlight of the convention?
I think for me personally was visiting the Career Expo. There is just like the major ag companies there, you know, promoting. But then there's also three hundred colleges there, community, state universities, so it's just cool to see a wide variety of colleges there, especially for me, senior. I was just wanting to see like what kind of colleges I'm interested in.
We got answers, like if you want to step up or if you're asking, I'm going to go behind. We all know what it wants. At the Expo, they had a discussion, and it was like, oh, yes, party, so we'll back for the next, and have fun. At the Expo, they had orders for our ag industry. And then so it's mainly on the studio, where it's just really a lot of people, and I remember streaming, so we, like, we have access.
And the Expo, I enjoyed a lot, getting to watch and see all colleges, also see all different companies, their equipment, cars, and any of that. Plus the fun thing that I got to enjoy, and I got to hop in the tractor for a little bit of that.
Would you care to share the, you mentioned that you set some goals for next year? Do you have those off the top of your head?
Yeah, so at the Officer Retreat, before we did all like the fun stuff, we got this like big, I wouldn't say packet, but like folder of like calendar stuff, just to help us plan. And so one of the three goals that we committed to as officer team, for the high school anyway, were like getting involvement in the students, and then also mentoring the middle schoolers. Because sometimes like the middle schoolers don't really know how to lead others, you know, because they are young. So I'm just trying to mentor them to become better leaders when they are in high school. And then also just community involvement, so, yeah.
Gotcha. Look, if we go back to the leadership thing, you also said you went to like a leadership session or meeting conference or something?
Yeah, so that was, yeah, so that was.
What was the takeaway from there?
So it was just what kind of leader do you want to be? So there is, they showed a video of like, like a fake security guard like on a beach, and like he was telling people what to do, and they would listen. And once he took off the uniform, people, just nobody listened to him. It was kind of a funny video, but just having like someone in authority, like, would want to like take charge and just want to control everybody. So they were just saying, don't be that, like, don't be that person. Like if you're, like for me, I'm the president of FFA, so just don't take control of everyone like in the chapter, and just, you know, leap by example, like do events, and just kind of make your time valuable, I guess, in a way, and not like underdo it or overdo it in a way. So that's what my takeaway was for me.
So you think that'll feed into how you work with the middle schoolers to engage them with good leadership?
And I, I try to attend their, they have morning meetings, so they actually have one tomorrow morning. I'm unable to attend to it. But, yeah, I try to interact with them as much as I can, just make them more excited for FFA in the future, so.
Very nice. Thank you.
You guys invest a lot of time and energy in the plot. How was, how did the plot finish up? And tell us a little bit about, about that.
Yeah, so Eric Rackerlin. So, yeah, so Eric Rackerlin, he, he does a great job just having his time and equipment come over here. So we actually did run into a few mechanical issues, which happened. So I actually had the experience to work with him fixing it all day, so that was fun. That was also the championship game for the soccer, so the little ten. So I had to leave early, but, yeah, I think, and everything ended up pretty.
It's just the health school, the Dorylton, and I'm in freshman backgrounds, and so that may lack for five, not two, because it's going to matter. And that's basically what it is, a full cycle, right? So as, when we're thinking about harvesting, we're capturing the data. And when we're there, we have a full-time professional apprentice supervising our data. Because that is published, all the processed data on the line. So we actually send the data to probably fifty different representatives with about thirty-six different varieties. And so to imagine, because of the caliber of data that's just safe and regulations of it, we are a well-known kind of impartial research station. And so that is really the showcase. And just as soon as the spring, what's going to happen is the representatives start collecting all the seed, storing it in a biochar, the day to hang out, what that looks like, looking at the fertilizer, all those pieces of parts. And even though those kids don't have production experience, the industry is highly eager to go into it. So a lot of poor people want to play in agriculture. And even in our area, there's a lot of wonderful careers connected to agronomy. And exposing these kids to these items, connecting chemistry and biology to this ultimate large research project is huge. And so even that day, even the mechanics players, being able to open up those experiences and have a community work partner, partner, is very, very special. Obviously, we're really biased, but I think it's one of the best thoughts in North Illinois, basically first school. It is standalone, all addressed, and it's focused with the friendships and those tea companies, those farmers, and being open and honest, right? It's great for a school to publish that we're not biased to any of those specific things.
And it's a good introduction to farming, because there are always breakdowns.
Yeah. Yeah. And marketing, and, yeah.
I can agree with that for sure.
Anything else?
It's great to see you guys in your, your blues and the jackets. I flew to Arizona on the first, so the convention had just ended. And on the plane that I was on, there was just, I think, eighteen to twenty students wearing their, their FFA jackets, and it said Arizona Chapter on the back, which I was thinking like Arizona Chapter for the whole state. But it was just really cool to see them. It reminded me of you and all of the hard work that you guys do here. And it just, I felt really proud that we have such a great chapter here, and that I knew that you guys had just come back from the convention too. And so I think, you know, Katerina talked about all the people in the convention center and how like there are so many of you, and that's just such a neat group that you're going to be able to say that you've been a part of for the rest of your life, right? And that's just a connection that you'll always have, so. I am proud of you, and I appreciate all that you do.
Your next event is tomorrow. So tomorrow, we have our football, we do that thing again. Tomorrow, also, we got a great deal of rubber these and tortos. So it's a, I'm in our job right now. So I couldn't even, I was like, try to focus on the league also, and I told you that was trying to just tell like, and those were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. It's always enjoyable to hear from the students at our meetings, so thank you. I enjoy this meeting every year. All right, so we'll move on to our committee updates. We'll start with Buildings and Grounds. So I'll provide some brief updates. First thing we'll talk about is our well at the middle school. So as you know, we lost water pressure one day, kind of late morning, and our staff reacted great, and we were able to maintain school for that day by busing students to the Park District Building, and we also had bottled water. So that was definitely a nice way to respond to it. But then subsequently, we had to call an e-learning day for the middle school the next day, just to kind of do some further research and figure out exactly how to proceed, which they were able to come up with a temporary fix that is still in effect. Basically, what happened was there's a booster pump that went out. So what our well system kind of consists of is there is a main pump that's down in the well casing at the bottom of the well, pumps water up. In our, in our scenario, we have a large storage tank, pumps it into the storage tank from the storage tank, this booster pump pumps it to the pressure tanks, and then the pressure tanks deliver it to the plumbing fixtures, the sinks and the toilets. So basically, what happened is that booster pump went out, so the water was not able to come out of the storage tank and be able to be used. So we've kind of been talking about this well as long as I've been on Buildings and Grounds, as it's kind of getting towards the end of its life cycle, there's a lot of corrosion, because these parts of it are in a pit. So it's underground, it's high moisture, there's a lot of corrosion and things like that. So what we're wanting to do and what we're currently exploring is to kind of do a more thorough fix to this, to hopefully kind of future-proof it and get it kind of back to where we need it. So what we're proposing to do, and we're getting quotes from three different places, which we still don't have yet, but we're kind of working on it. So basically, we want to eliminate the storage tank, because it's a very large tank. We don't know exactly how big it is, because it's partially buried. It's like five or six foot diameter, so it's several thousand gallons. So we're hoping to eliminate that, and then also eliminate this booster pump and put in a larger well pump, main well pump at the bottom of the casing. And this possibly could also involve digging the well deeper, maybe to get to a better part of the aquifer, and maybe get a little bit better quality water. And we're also hoping that by eliminating the storage tank, maybe it would improve our water quality. So basically, long story short, we're getting estimates on this. This is probably going to be a multi-day repair, so it would probably be done potentially on a break, or, you know, sometime when, when they'd have a couple days to do it. So it's also probably, we're anticipating it to be fairly expensive. So what Dr. Sontag has looked into is there's a maintenance grant available, which is a matching funds maintenance grant. So basically, it's a, I think it's a fifty thousand dollar grant, which this hopefully won't cost that much, but we could use that also for other items that need repair. So basically, they would give us fifty thousand, and then we would chip in fifty thousand, and we would get a hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements if we got the grant. So we're kind of looking at that to maybe, you know, help soften the blow of this, because as our budget needs, we don't have a whole lot of fluff this year to account for things like this. So basically, there'll be more updates on that once we get prices. The second thing that was discussed is Mr. White, represented the FFA Alumni Association, and provided a brief update on the FFA building. He informed us that the underground piping inspection was recently completed and approved, and the gas lines for heating are being extended from the FFA building to the high school to connect to the existing gas meter. And they were estimating that it probably will take an additional, you know, maybe two hundred thousand in fundraising to finish the building. So they just kind of gave an update on kind of where they're at on that.
But they're going to give a more definitive update right after the new year.
Yep.
So those kind of some estimating numbers and generality, so we look forward to getting the full report. Lena?
Thank you for that. And then the next thing that was discussed was our 540 West Lincoln property. As you know, we've been talking about repairing the driveway that comes in what I would call the eastern entrance, I think they call it Walgreen Avenue, kind of comes around and wraps, and then also includes an area to the east of the bus barn door that our staff was desiring to have a better kind of pad. So we've been discussing using asphalt grindings to help fill the potholes and to make it more drivable and safe for cars, you know, as to not damage them. The estimate they got was twenty-five thousand, which would do the driveway and that kind of pad east of the bus barn that I referenced. So I don't know, it's probably getting late enough in the year that I don't know that that'll necessarily happen this year. It may have to wait till spring. And as we've had in previous discussions too, part of that driveway is owned by the residents of 530 West Lincoln, so we're kind of in the process of working with them to see what the best course of action moving forward is. And then the last thing that was discussed was talking about a master facilities plan. So basically, I just want to preface this by saying that we're not planning any actions towards construction or expansion at this time. You know, basically, we've not determined a need. We're just, as we've talked in the last several meetings, we're just looking to the future, keeping our eye on development in our district, and just kind of keep current with what's going on. So these master facility plans is nothing new. The committee kind of has a precedence of doing this every several years, every five years, ten years, you know, it just kind of depends. Um, I believe there was one done in the mid-twenty teens. There was one done in twenty nineteen by Corgin and Clark. And then we had, our most recent one was, I believe, in twenty-three or twenty-four with our NG, uh, NG project. So basically, what we're hoping to do, um, is utilize a no-cost, no-obligation assessment to better understand the construction costs of, you know, possible building expansion to any of our buildings um, and also the possibility of an eight-lane track at the high school. So this is similar to, uh, the NG project that we did a couple of years ago. NG kinda was more targeted specifically for classrooms, you know, for building efficiencies, things of that nature. This maybe is a more all-encompassing, that talks kinda more overall district buildings and kind of a, a broader overreach. So what we're wanting to utilize is again, the no-cost side of this. Um, 'cause I remember in the past, we've talked about, uh, I guess before the NG one, we talked about Corgin and Clark doing another one that was, I mean, it seems like they were quoting like twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars to do this master facilities plan. So we think it's more economical and a better use of our money to try and kinda use some of these no-cost obligations. Um, so basically, as I said, we're kinda just monitoring development. We're wanting to keep current. Uh, it's been estimated that it takes two to three years to do any kinda building expansion, um, which obviously we would have that amount of time because if any new developments came in, we would have that amount of time to deal with it. But we kinda wanna keep this top of mind too of not being caught off guard. Um, so I think that was about it. I don't know, Darren, do you have anything to add?
Oh, that was it.
All right, so move on. Are there any questions? I know we've covered a lot there. All right, we'll move on to our B-I-B-C-C committee update.
Um, we met last Wednesday and our meeting was focused on looking at the, um, school calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight school years. Um, it was a very productive discussion amongst, um, stakeholders from all areas. And, uh, we came up with a, what we feel is a pretty fantastic calendar, um, that we present later.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we'll present to you guys later.
We'll be the judge of that.
You will like it. And, um, yeah, uh, uh, it was a, it was a, one of our longer meetings, but I felt like it was pretty productive as well, so.
Any questions for Abby?
So by and large, the, the members of the committee, they were happy with the calendar?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
We did ask several times.
Yeah.
Are we all agreeing?
Are you sure you like?
All right, great. Well, we'll move on to our I-V-V-C update. I guess there was no meeting, but I don't know if there's an update to be shared either Debbie or Dr. Sontag. All right, we will move on to our student representative update. Take it away.
Okay, um, well, you don't, you don't have to wait for the slide. But, um, so I'll start us off. So on November sixth, the student council hosted the first game night of the year, which included nine-square, octaball, knockerball, and some other fun games and activities. Um, on November tenth, the high school had their annual NHS induction, which included new, eight new inductees. Mr. Baddal gave a great message on how to be influential in positive way that included beyond screens and social media. After the induction, we had a great time of socializing and eating in the library.
Uh, so on the eleventh, um, the high school had their fall sports, um, award ceremony. Uh, every team had, um, very good like, um, seasons. Um, and then a lot of student athletes made all-conference and then also like local area, uh, teams as well. Um, another thing I wanted to mention is that more than half of the student athletes, uh, maintained a GPA of three point five throughout the fall, um, sports season. So that's, that's a great number to hear. Um, and then also the middle school basketball, they've started, um, about for, I think, three weeks now, I would say. Um, so they kinda start early. And then the girls varsity started this week, uh, and then the boys' basketball season starts December first. Uh, and then another, um, more important thing I wanna mention is, um, the high school hosted the annual veterans assembly. Um, so to me, I, I think that's the most important assembly that we host every year. Um, I just love seeing all of our veterans from the community join us. Um, so the, I know the middle school and elementary choir sang, um, and the high school band, um, played as well. And it's just a great event to recognize all those that served in the military.
Uh, can I just interrupt real quick? I was at a, uh, diner at a pretty far away, you know, it was Geneva. And I overheard a group of, uh, which were veterans saying that three of them were coming back from something, saw all the flags. And they said, "Hinkley Big Rock's doing it right." And I thought that was so, I'm just in the going, trying to listen in and like wow, you know? And so whoever did that, wow, that, it showed a real sense of, uh...
I think that's the, um, National Honors, the, the, not honors, the National Historic Museum.
Yeah. So it, it captured the attention of people that that, that celebration is near and dear, so.
Um, on November twenty-first, at six P M., the high school drama showcase will be held in the fine arts zone and there is no cost to attend.
Uh, the past weekend, uh, Ryan Shea and then Savannah McMurtry, uh, participated in the Illinois Music Education Association District Eight Band Festival. Um, so it was a fun and educational day.
Um, so as we outlined in the previous meeting, we are sending out the application for our new student board reps this week. Um, we're hoping to give the time over Thanksgiving break for people to fill out the application, um, before Christmas, so.
Everything that we have, so if you guys have any...
Questions?
Questions?
Savannah, have you guys had really anybody who expressed interest in, in applying?
We've been, uh, Dr. Sontag and I were, uh, at the middle school basketball game, uh, today. So we're trying to get some people, um, interested. Um, so I, I think there's, there might be a few people, um, especially in the, uh, superintendent advisory committee, uh, I think would be interested, so.
And I think we are aiming toward the sophomore class so that they will have the opportunity to do it through junior and senior year.
Great.
And I think we're gonna stick with the number three, um, for board reps if we can, so.
So will they all be of the same class? I know when we originally talked about this, we talked about having like a junior and a senior or multiples.
I think that'd be the goal, um, but I guess if there was a freshman who wanted to step as a sophomore and do it, I think we're open, or a current junior as a senior, but I think sophomores would be the goal.
So you don't have a specific...
The application's gonna go out, um, and target the current freshmen, sophomores and juniors. Um, so we will just see who all applies. You know, our, our initial thought was, when we started this, that we wanted to have some turnover every year so there would always be, um, kind of that handoff and training. That's not what happened that year, you know? And so I think we're open, we are open at, as the, as a group and, you know, wondering if the board is to just see what happens with who applies, just like we did last time and how the interviews go, right? We wanna have, mo- most importantly, we wanna have individuals who are dedicated and committed to the process and, um, participating as a board rep. So, as they said, that'll go out at the end of this week. Um, not very many students check their email, so we're working on getting some other ways of, um, advertising that where they can find this application. So if you think your student might be interested, please tell them to check their email. Um, not having devices out during the day does limit Q R codes and grab this link and those things, but we wouldn't trade that for where we are right now, so, um, we're just gonna figure out the best way to get it to them.
Perfect. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to our administrative update.
Yeah, so I'll just, um, share just a little bit more about our Veterans Day Assembly. Um, this was the first time that we brought all of three of our schools together for one celebration and one educational experience. So previously, the tradition has been that elementary school would have their breakfast and then a student-led performance to honor our veterans and acknowledge the importance of the day. And then at the high school, it was more of, um, the band would play and it was more, um, I guess veteran-led or, um, administrator-led. And we really wanted to capture the opportunity for the students to all be under one roof, both to honor and celebrate our veterans, but also to be educated in the significance of the day. And I think it was wonderful. We had a hundred individuals come through for breakfast and we had just under thirty veterans stay and be recognized in the ceremony. As Matthew said, it was great to hear our elementary choir, which has about twenty-eight students in it, sing. And then our high, uh, middle school, high school, we have one high school student, so our middle school choir, um, performed and the band played. And then the rest of the whole morning was student-led. And so students shared, um, intermixed throughout the morning, different pieces of the significance of why we celebrate Veterans Day and why we're there to honor our veterans. And then we had an opportunity for them to introduce themselves and, um, their family that they were with. And I think, you know, we have a couple who are here, so I don't wanna speak for you, but I think it was, um, a really positive emotional day, um, that just brought our community together. I think oftentimes, elementary school would have so many veterans attend that didn't, then transfer over here to the high school. So some of our regular attendees of the high school program, I believe, were quite taken aback by the number of veterans that did show up in our community for that celebration. And I hope then that that expands their network, right? And I, and I do wanna say that the veterans came in and, and they brought the colors in, um, so they did still have a role in that. And I think, I think that they felt honored from the feedback that we've received. So it was a change from tradition, but, um, the positive feedback that we've had so far seems like it was a good change. I don't know if you guys have heard anything else.
It was great. I liked that it was all in one area and combined, so it was very lovely. Thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you for coming, those of you who were able to make it. Um, so the other thing I wanted to talk about just briefly tonight, um, but I do, uh, as we start thinking about our mid-year retreat with our administrators, believe that this would be, um, a really valuable topic to expand upon and with our students there as well. So the Illinois School Report Card data came out and I just, I wanna talk about some areas that we really have made some great progress in, and I wanna point that out to you guys. I mean, last year, we were talking about how the elementary school came back with a summative designation, um, for targeting for children with disabilities. And we talked about how that can happen when our s- class groups are so small, right? And you really can get down to I, almost identifying individual students and where they fell in that data set. So this year, from the twenty-twenty-five assessment data, and most of this designation comes from our test results, but also comes from that five essential survey that our students and parents fill out, um, in addition to things that we offer such as C T E programming or, um, accelerated placement, advanced placement classes, those kinda things. So there's lots of factors that go into, um, this designation. But for twenty-twenty-five, last school year, all three of our schools, again, fell into the commendable range. Um, and so I want to celebrate that. Um, just above that is exemplary. And our middle school, once again, came very close to receiving that exemplary designation. So we were just a couple of points away.
That's great.
Um, I, I think that's great. I wanna honor and celebrate that. Um, also at the high school level, we saw an increase in our graduation rate. So we were previously hovering around eighty-two, eighty-three percent of our kids graduating within four years. Um, we, which went up to eighty-seven point three percent this year. Um, and the state average is eighty-nine, so we're closing that gap and we're seeing more kids complete high school within four years. Our five-year graduation rate is a little bit higher than that, um, but the state and us, as Hinkley Big Rock, would like to target that four-year. Um, the other thing I would say is that in ELA in English, especially for those kids in grades three through eight, um, we had a growth score of fifty-six point seven. So we are growing at a rate that exceeds the state expected, um, rate or their average rate. So in ELA, again, I A R is that test that we do in third through eighth grade. Our kids showed good growth. In math, they showed good growth as well in those grades three through eight. So again, we fell slightly below what the state average would be in growth for math, but we're hovering right there. Um, w- we were below the state expectation for high school ELA and math growth. So that's an area that I wanna continue to target. Um, as we build up those foundational skills at the earlier levels, I hope that we're creating pathways that will help our high school students also excel in those areas. Um, from a performance, um, standpoint, so that's just talking about rate of growth. For a performance standpoint, um, our kids are underperforming in the area of math. And we have seen this, we've talked about this. The state as a whole is underperforming in math and now they have a targeted math, um, program that they want to roll out, just like they did for literacy in the past few years. So one of the things I really wanna make sure that we are spending time, um, digging into is our math curricular resources. So a few years ago, we adopted a new resource at the grades three, K through eight. It's called Big Ideas authored by the same individual, all the way up kindergarten through eighth grade. So the vocabulary was the same, the order and, um, of teaching really stair-stepped and built off each other. And we didn't continue with that into high school. So I've encouraged our math curriculum team to start looking at our resource. We haven't actually adopted a high school math resource in two thousand and seven. So it's time to really dig into that and look at, like, what are the resources that we're utilizing to help deliver our curriculum? And, and then how can we do that? So a couple of years ago, we introduced, um, honors algebra at the middle school. So we said if these guys are really accelerated learners, being in a class of accelerated learners would be important to help them shift forward. I do think we're gonna start seeing the fruits of that with us, uh, with this cohort of students. Um, but we do need to be mindful of, um, how we're teaching math, what we're teaching and what our trajectory is gonna look like. Um, one of the other things that I'd like to talk more about at the retreat, not so much tonight, is I'd like to provide a lot more data for you, is this idea of, um, AP Advanced Placement Courses versus dual credit. So over the past five years, I've went back, I can tell you the last three years, we've had zero students receive a three or higher in calculus. Um, we've only offered pre-calculus as an AP class last year and this year. And, um, we had thirty-four kids take it and over those two years, only eight students scored a three or higher. So our kids are taking this advanced placement class with the hope of not having to take that in college, right? Uh, exempting out. And so part of the challenge is that we're squishing a lot of curriculum into a short period of time before they take that assessment in April. Um, there's a lot of stress, I think, that comes with that. And then there's no guaranteed win at the end. And so we've started to add a lot of more dual-credit courses, which means they take it and they get high school credit and guaranteed college credit. So that would be something I think we should explore, um, as a district, more of those. Even though, when they do these state measures for report card, um, and they give us a designation, one of the factors that they do consider is how many AP courses do you offer? Um, I personally care more about how our students are prepared for the ones going on to college, how they are prepared and what they can take with them versus offering these courses, um, for our summative designation. So just a conversation, I think, things I wanna celebrate really are, are, we're showing good growth, especially at the younger levels. I think we're gonna start to see that come up, but we need to then make sure that we're providing the right, um, instruction and the right resources to those kids as they come up. And then how do we support our current students, um, who are in it right now? Um, this is why we targeted the goals that we targeted at the beginning of the year, right? We know we have some areas to grow in. We really put our focus on teaching and learning this year. We're doing these benchmark assessments from kindergarten through eleventh grade to make sure that we are identifying areas of strength and areas of challenge so we can build individual skill, um, profiles for each of our students and know where they could benefit from some growth. But I think we need to celebrate that all of our schools are back in commendable. Our graduation rate went up, our growth rates are going up. Our performance in English Language Arts continues to be above the state average at the elementary and middle school level. And we're gonna start closing in on that gap for math, so.
It's gonna sound a little backwards, but empirically, we are falling behind in math. Anecdotally, do the teachers... Anecdotally, do the teachers feel that in the classroom? Kind of going backwards. Usually we start with the anecdotal and go to the empirical.
They do. And so that is one, one of the reasons, if you recall a few years back, I guess it's been five years now, where we came to the board and said, we really need a dedicated math resource. We didn't have one at that time. Um, we had a teacher created, teacher developed math curriculum at the elementary school. And so we said, these te, these teachers just, we really need a structured way to teach math. Um, last year was year four of that adoption cycle, and it was the first year that every single student, um, in third grade, which is the first year that they are assessed, um, demonstrated growth, um, met their growth goals on the MAP assessment that we do benchmarking on. So that was huge. And I think we're starting to see, it's going to take five to six years to really start to see, um, all of that come together. But, um, we are seeing growth now, but the teachers were seeing it, they still see it. Our, our middle school teachers would say, what are our elementary teachers doing to prepare them for math, right? And then the high school teachers, um, would say the same. So part of what we're doing as a district this year is doing all of that curriculum mapping and alignment to make sure that when kids take freshman algebra, they're hitting all of the skills that they need to be prepared for Algebra II or for geometry or to meet the state benchmark measures, right? So we don't, we don't, teaching for the ACT test, but we, we should be meeting the benchmarks, right? Uh, if we're teaching the class, we should be teaching the skills that are the power standards for that course. And so, um, last year was the first year, you remember, we switched from SAT to ACT. So there wasn't a lot of, um, previous data, but we did score below the state average in every area on that ACT. And so I think part of that was test-taking strategies, um, knowing how to read graphs, understanding some of like, even just how to attack a timed test. And so the feedback we got from our high school students when they took that first benchmark assessment was, um, wow. You know, I don't know how to take that test, or that's eye-opening. And so I think that by doing this, and again, we're seeing, we'll talk more at the retreat, uh, a, again, but where our intervention needs are and where some of those gaps in what we're teaching could be filled in a little bit more to ensure that we are hitting all of those important standards and skills. So, um, it's a long way of saying, I think we picked really good goals this year, and the data from last year supports that. And, but if you have a chance to go on our Illinois Report Card, it's interactive. I couldn't really print a hundred and sixty-five pages for you, but, um, it's got, uh, the data tells some really nice stories. And we are showing some growth in some areas, and that, that's exciting. That'll be the momentum we need to keep going, but we do have some areas that we're going to continue to focus on. And I think we should be thinking about our AP classes or dual-credit classes more valuable and, and where we want to go with that. Any questions?
Great. Well, thank you, Dr. Sontag.
Sure.
We'll move on to our discussion section, um, start out with our calendar survey results and proposed calendars.
Okay, so, um, we took, we had a hundred and eighty-eight responses to the calendar survey. I think that is the most responses that we've gotten from any survey that we've sent out, at least since I've been in the district. So I appreciate that everybody took the time to do that survey. We had some future HBR parents take the survey, which I think is great because they had an opportunity to, um, provide some information. Really, we looked at a couple of important things, start, start of the year. You know, do we want to continue with this delayed start, which is a week later than what we had been doing in August? Um, and get out way earlier in May, or do we want to keep kind of that rhythm and cadence we've had? The majority of all responders said they liked starting later in August. Um, good news is, with the way the calendar lays out, even starting later in August, we can finish before Memorial Day. So our recommendation is going to be to start on August nineteenth with kiddos, and then we would be out, um, the Thursday or Friday before Memorial Day. There's a caveat in there with the Thursday or Friday before Memorial Day because if the governor deems Election Day a required holiday, um, we will need to amend our calendar to take that holiday, but then we would have to go one more day in May. Um, we talked about with the survey results, things that came up were there are too many random days off. Like, how do we get, if we're going to take a day off for something, tack it on to an existing long weekend or an existing break so that we have, this was from both teachers and parents, so that we have uninterrupted instruction and no random days that are just off. So we did our best, um, to capture that. And when you look at the proposed calendar, you'll see big sections where it's just all white, right? There's no color coding on that, that key. So we had lots of time where we had some really good uninterrupted instructional time. Um, we did have people this time around really request that full week of Thanksgiving out. Um, we talked about how to best do that. Many of the neighboring districts, um, have parent-teacher conferences on that Monday of Thanksgiving week, and they offer them virtually, uh, via telephone or in person. We do want to encourage participation in parent-teacher conferences. This year, we had ninety-nine percent of our elementary parents attend a fall conference. It was much less at middle school and high school, but our elementary parents did, um, participate at almost a hundred percent. So we, we are not devaluing that, but we did hear, um, from the vast number of responders that, that having that whole week off as a fall break would be something that they would like to have happen. And we can do that and still be out before Memorial Day, which was another request, by having parent-teacher conferences that week and then extending them across multiple modalities for participation.
You're moving your parent-teacher conference pretty late, though.
It is. And so what we also talked about was parent-teacher conference should not be the time and the only time that parents are hearing if they are having concerns. And so progress report time falls that mid-October, and that it would be the expectation that any student receiving less than a C or having learning behaviors that need to be addressed should have a communication, have a progress report time. Would not have to be a dedicated day to that, but that could be a parent meeting, a parent phone call. Um, that would be the expectation there. Then we went into winter break. Um, people like having both weekends instead of going mid-week to mid-week because as Christmas shifts, um, and New Year shifts to the later in the week, that is something we could look at. But we talked about that for a while. Um, we did survey about Martin Luther King Day because we had received some feedback that that three-day weekend right after winter break, um, just comes so quickly, and it's just another day off. Um, survey results really were inconclusive on that day. And as a committee, we felt that it would be best to, um, honor that day by not being in school. Um, March, we have spring break. Again, I just want to, um, remind everybody that when we became part of IVEC back in nineteen seventy-six, um, we agreed to a joint agreement that said we would, all the members of IVEC would take spring break the last full week of March. And so most of us, majority of us, still honor that, um, as we build our calendars. And that is why our spring break falls where it does, so that we can align with all of the member districts of IVEC. Um, Easter week, Easter weekend does fall over spring break in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, we traditionally have taken off Good Friday, and the survey results were overwhelming with the request for Easter Monday to be off. And so what we did with Easter Monday is we made it an emergency day, um, which means it's off unless we take a snow day or some other out-of-school day that needs to be made up before February first. And then that would be the first opportunity to make it up. Um, that is the way that the calendar used to be, um, designed before COVID and e-learning. And so we put that back in as that emergency day. April, there's another parent-teacher conference. Um, that one would be half-day conferences for, um, parent-requested or teacher-requested one with a half-day school improvement. I can't color code two different ways on a day, or maybe Megan can figure that out, but I couldn't. So it is blue because parent-teacher conference is the most important thing we would like the community to know. Um, we kept that May seventh School Improvement Day. That is, um, traditionally been prom and also, um, an opportunity for us to come together and celebrate the school year and talk about what our goals are for the following year. Um, one of the other things that came out in the survey is that, um, the community and the teachers really wanted a consistent dismissal time. And they all did like the idea of a twelve-fifteen dismissal before break. I shouldn't say, all the majority of the responders to the survey, um, requested a twelve-fifteen dismissal before each of those breaks. I did, we did survey the high school teachers secondarily, um, about final exams because this does make second semester, um, quite a bit longer than first semester. They felt that that was okay because they like the placement of final exams before winter break. The families and the students don't need to stress over, over break. And even though the spring semester is longer, we lose a lot of instructional days to state testing, um, college board testing and end-of-the-year celebrations, field trips. So they felt like it balanced, um, just fine. And then you see, we have the, um, last four days there listed as the emergency days. If we don't have any emergency days that we need to take, we would start August nineteenth with students and go through May twenty-seventh. If we have to take Election Day off, the last day would be May twenty-eighth. And in this calendar year, Memorial Day is not until the thirty-first. The other big change that was, um, very loud and clear on the survey results was to shift graduation to Saturday, um, move that off of a Sunday. People really wanted to have a Saturday afternoon graduation to allow for many factors, um, but particularly travel for family and celebrations with family and getting that off of a Sunday. So that was the recommendation of the committee, move it to a Saturday. It would not change this year's seniors. Remember that, that graduation is set, that would be for Sunday, so it would be the future year, moving that to a Saturday. Um, are there any questions about that next year calendar before we move into twenty-seven, twenty-eight? Or anything, Abby or Maya, you would like to add from those discussions?
The singular comment about taking, uh, Super Bowl Monday off didn't get any traction, huh?
That one did not. We did laugh about it.
I appreciated that.
I have heard that everywhere.
It wasn't from you, was it?
No, that was good.
Yes, um, so no, that one did not. I know students won't be here, but is there any?
I mean, I think just getting, um, off before Memorial Day is good. Um, especially with final exams, you have that three-day weekend. And then, like, for me, I kind of forgot, I didn't forget, but like, I just kind of ignored final exams because I wanted to enjoy my three-day weekend. And then I had like, I think it was, I think it's two days or a day to like, prepare, like, um, back in school. And then you had the final exam, so.
Yeah, I definitely. Definitely wish this year we had the full Thanksgiving week off, but for the people next year, though, like, I think.
Yeah. You know, a lot of the other feedback we got was align with Indian Creek, align with Sycamore, align with Samenok, align with Yorkville, align, align, align. And, uh, we do do our best. I will say, we've been in conversations, um, I have been in conversations with the other districts that do surround us. They are undergoing kind of the same process.
Did their survey say align with Inklubig Rock?
No, I don't think they do. Their survey says, you know, other than. But again, I, I do think with the way the calendar itself just naturally falls in these next couple of years, we will be closer in our alignment. Um, I, a lot of the other districts are not bringing their calendars till January. And so we had heard from our community, when are the calendars coming out? We need to, we need to start planning. And I think if we waited to align with the other districts, we would be looking at February or March before we could bring our own calendars out. Again, I am in conversations with them. The superintendents all agree on what we would like to see, but they're also surveying their staff and their community, and they're going to do their best to work within the requests, you know, that they get as well. Um, but I, I think our start date will be closer. We'll be talking about the IVEC calendar in December and then approving that in January. So we'll know more then, but.
There was also what, five different?
There were, yes.
Five different school districts they wanted us to look at and across three different counties. It was not, it was not feasible.
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, that's important, too. Like, each county kind of follows their own calendar, if you will, for county-wide professional development and then county-wide spring breaks. And so, um, we did, we do do our best. I just want to put that out there, we do. It is something we think about, but we also, I don't like the way that some of the other calendars have a lot of more interrupted instruction, you know? So I think that this really captures, and our teachers felt, provides them big chunks of days to teach without interruption.
Great.
So that, we have got one more, I'm sorry. The twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar is two years out. Um, previously, the board has, uh, wanted to and committed to getting a calendar out, uh, well in advance and looking at two years at a time. That calendar mirrors everything that we talked about, except that Easter is, um, late. It is towards the middle of April on that following year. And spring break, still the full last week of March, actually gets you to the end of March. Um, so looking at that other calendar, same thing. We would take Good Friday as a non-attendance day. We have Easter Monday slotted for an emergency day. It does move parent-teacher conferences in the spring back up to February so that we could tie it to something and not have it be kind of this floating day. And we would be in session through the Friday before Memorial Day and still out before Memorial Day, assuming we don't take any emergency days, other than one. So any questions about that?
I don't have any questions, just, uh, I just kind of wanted to piggyback off of Tim's, that my own concern. But making sure that, um, you can argue about it, but just making sure that parents, teachers and students are all in the same shoes above or that earlier in the semester.
So this year, what I would say is, again, we had ninety-nine percent of our elementary parents attend. And what the elementary school does is they, um, through their multi-tiered system of support, when students are struggling, they're calling parents in for meetings throughout the school year. And so they weren't, they weren't concerned that somebody's going to get overlooked, but they felt like that was kind of like a good, um, almost mid-year check-in in person, on the phone, virtually, to celebrate successes, to look at growth, or to, again, kind of do a data check, right? So if we were talking about students who were in interventions, they would be about that progress report, mid-October time, meeting with parents to go over intervention results. Um, we had forty parents come to middle school conferences, and we had twenty parents come to high school conferences. So conferences, what it seems like from, at the secondary level, is not where parents and teachers are first conversing about student performance. Remember, at middle school and high school, all of their grades and their assignments and things are posted online. So that's kind of like that immediate feedback, which triggers either parents to contact, um, teachers or teachers to contact parents. And again, Ms. Lauer has said, um, and I agree, this expectation that if anytime a student falls below a C, the parent needs to be contacted, um, in having those conversations. And so it should not be the first time that they're engaging in any conversation.
Anyone else? All right, so we will be voting on these as an action item, correct? All right, move on to our second discussion point, which is our IASB Resolutions Committee Recommendations for Delegate Assembly, uh, which Maya is going to represent us, uh, here this weekend. So I don't know exactly how we want to do this. I think maybe we start, there's one resolution that I think is more pertinent, uh, to us that maybe would require a little bit more discussion. So maybe we start there. Um, it's on school bus safety funding, and it was submitted by Sycamore, which is interesting. So I don't know, Dr. Sontag, do you want to touch on any?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the biggest piece of information in the, um,
What page?
That's page sixteen, if you're looking at the document. So beginning July first, twenty thirty-one, all school buses now must have, um, the three-point seatbelt system installed in them for new buses. Um, at this point, they're not asking districts to retrofit existing buses. Um, but if we were, it does add expenses. And adding seatbelts to buses when they manufacture them is going to increase the cost as well. So Sycamore, um, put out a resolution, um, basically just the twenty-twenty-five enactment of Senate Bill one ninety-one requires all newly-acquired school buses to include lap and shoulder belts, um, but provides no state appropriation. Um, but provides no state appropriation for the added expense, current vendor quotes show the belts add seven to eighteen thousand per bus. A disproportionate burden for rural and low EAV school districts that replace only one or two buses per year, so without fiscal relief or additional time, smaller districts will be forced to divert. Limited education dollars away from classroom or delay essential fleet turnover undermining student safety, so they're asking um. For a couple of things, number one, that there be grant funds allocated that rural school districts could apply for to help offset the cost of um putting in those seatbelts. Um, giving the smaller districts such as ours, smaller than two thousand students, an additional three years to kinda start to see this happen. Um, and then just working with um IDOT to approve alternative research-based occupant protection technologies that are equal. Safety but lower cost, um so it's kinda saying, hey, wait a minute, this is just another one of those laws that got put into place. And we didn't think about how much it's going to cost or what the actual logistics are of making it happen, so please slow down. At least recognize there are districts in the state that are gonna need more time and some money to do this and so the committee is recommending. Um, that it does get adopted and that the delegates vote yes for that, so do we have any? Um, oppositional feedback for Maya that we would not like to devote yes at this as a district level?
So I hope we wanna do a show of hands, all that are in favor of voting to adopt?
Well, hold on. So, the problem though that I see with it is they didn't provide any statistical information on what improvements we expect to see, right? I didn't, I didn't see.
So the law is already enacted and there's, we don't, this isn't about that, it's since the law is there and we have to do this, what what Sycamore is saying is. Give us time and money. Yeah, we don't have a say on whether or not this is gonna come to fruition, but since it has, can we get some time and money as a rural district? Okay, so moving on, then the rest of it was really um some constitutional amendments where they just had some language changes, they only really rewrote two. Um, and that was around their different types of memberships and then um how they were doing resolutions and again. You know, the whole committee here is recommending that these get adopted, there's nothing substantial, I don't know if everybody read through them, there was not substantial language changes. Um, again, they're creating a tiered membership option with different um roles and responsibilities, so I felt like. After sitting through these for a few years, this one was.
Easy.
Yes, and easy, it was like.
I knew Maya was coming in.
There's a lot of green in there.
Some of these have been really chaotic and a lot of conflict, so.
Is there any discussion anybody needs, feels, is needed for this? The more, more seems like.
Yeah, you get your thumb ready like this, hit the right button.
I think you get a cool little remote or something.
Alright, perfect, so we'll move on to our third discussion item of policy review, uh this month, we had section one, school district organization.
Yeah, talk about easy button, easy button, um so section one is just school district organization, if you looked through there. Um, the first thing that we look at is just um that we're recognized as a legal school district. Um, and then our organization operations, it talks about the fact that we are members of Indian Valley Vocational Center. Um, that we partner with Kishwaki Educational Consortium and then Valley Education for Employment System, which is valleys, you guys have heard. Us talk about valleys, so that's what that's referring to there and then um the school district philosophy. We, so when we met last, last year as a community eh group of stakeholders, we focused on writing a new vision and mission. And motto statement, but we did not um capture a new philosophy, so this is the most recent philosophy that we have as a district, so I guess I would just encourage the board to re-review that and ensure that that is. What you believe, um it's still our philosophy that we are operating our vision and mission under.
Good everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so that's our policy review for this month.
Alright, short and sweet. Alright, we will move on to our action items, I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five levy as submitted.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Alright, is there any discussion? So this is what we obviously talked about in our truth and taxation hearing, um so I think we've talked about it in October, we talked about it again in the hearing tonight, so I think. Unless anybody else says anything, alright, roll call please.
Sid.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Biddell.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes, alright, I need a motion to approve a sixty-month fair market value copier lease and service agreement with Marco Technologies as submitted. So moved.
Second.
Alright, uh discussion, I don't know if you wanna touch on briefly.
Yeah, just a quick um update that our current lease with Xerox and R.K. Dixon. Xerox being the parent company is coming um to the end and so Mr. Kresh spent some time. Um, receiving some requests for uh proposals, reviewing those, meeting with different vendors. Um, he selected Marco Technologies based on the recommendation and reference of some of our area colleagues as well as. The technology and price point um that they can provide, so over the course of five years. Um, I believe he was talking about saving about forty thousand dollars, so, um it was significant savings. And we'll have all new machines installed over winter break.
Smaller?
Nope. They're just new, just different brand.
Giant. There was some coffee she was like, I have a sister, they're huge.
Perfect, well, thank you for that update, uh any questions, alright, roll call please.
Barrett.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Biddell.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes, motion passes seven-zero, I need a motion to approve the FFA to attend the twenty-twenty-six National Convention.
So moved.
Second. Alright, discussion, I think they did it.
I wondered why Matthew asked for permission to go on the trip, is he planning on doing another year in high school?
I mean, if it, if it lets me go to National Convention, I don't know.
Wow, he'll do another year.
Alright, roll call please.
Haynes.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Biddell.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Sid. Richard.
Yes, motion passes seven-zero.
It was the formal we.
Need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight school calendars as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, alright, roll call please.
Sid.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Yes.
Biddell.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes, motion passes seven-zero, uh we had no FOIA requests.
Alright, so agenda items for next meeting, so I don't know, traditionally, we have in some years not had a December meeting. I don't know if anyone has a problem with this, because we do have two meetings in January, if you remember with our board retreat, so.
Additionally, the January meeting falls um just very shortly after winter break and the December one would fall right before winter break, so they would be just two school weeks apart.
So does anyone have issue with?
There's nothing um pressing on your end that we would have to do, like bills and stuff, how would that all?
So, our, our policy allows us to pay regular occurring bills without meeting, I don't anticipate any um. Out of the ordinary things that we would need to pay, signing and approving this um agreement for the copier lease would be the most important thing that we would need to carry over. We have a new press issue that we need to start looking at, um that was provided for you guys tonight and I have a notes page um to kinda guide through that that I can send along. We hopefully would have more information about our school maintenance grant, but doing that application in January actually gives us a little bit more time to get quotes. Um, on the work that we need to do and then um the only other thing would be pushing back our section three policy review, which. We have an open month in the two-year review cycle to do so. Traditionally, um as we've talked about in the past, many boards do their tentative levy in November and then their final levy in December because it is due the Tuesday before. The last Tuesday in December, since, so since we have done the levy, we have nothing of um substantial significance to act on in December.
I'm all for not having a meeting, it's a busy catering week for me, so.
Anyone opposed? Alright, so we will wait till January to talk about those items.
See you next year.
So we would just need to make a note for the public that our December meeting is done, canceled.
So then we do have an executive session, um so I guess this will end our recorded part of this, uh we will come back and adjourn after the executive session, but we will not come back on the recording. So I need a motion to enter an executive session for litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf. Of the particular project, public body that has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. Or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the findings shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meetings. Five ILCS one twenty dash two C eleven.
So moved, second.
Second, can we take a five-minute break before we go to?
Yes, so roll call please.
Haynes.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
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 Barrett.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes, alright, so as Darren said, let's take a five-minute break and we will convene back here.